I'd like to call the September 25, 2018 Planning Board Meeting to order. Please rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time, I will appoint Mr. Zalinski to be a voting member in place of Mr. Holland. Item one. By the way, since you know people are not in their normal chairs, since Gail is absent, Barbara is -- will be taking our minutes for this evening, so I will be running the meeting. Okay, item one. Public hearing, Father and Son Realty Trust, Todd Fitzgerald, five lot subdivision on Curryville Road, map 15, block 2, lot 1-1. Okay. We received a letter requesting that we reconsider our waiver that was granted at the last meeting. Is there a motion to reconsider that?
I'll make motions.
Is there a second? Okay, discussion on the motion to reconsider.
Well, I have a question. It says that there's a form you have to fill out about why they were trusting the waiver. So I don't know, did we have one on file?
Yes.
Can I look at it? Can I read it? Does it go in the package?
No, it came the last meeting.
Give me a second.
Thank you.
That's my original, so...
Yeah, it was in the package.
Do you think?
I guess it wasn't here last week, though.
Oh, but it was in the last package?
I wasn't having it.
Right.
I missed the last one.
Okay. First, we have to -- there's any discussion on the motion to reconsider? Not on the motion for the waiver, but the motion to reconsider.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion on the motion to reconsider? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
What do we -- what?
This is the motion to reconsider.
Okay. A motion to reconsider. Okay, I'm voting yes.
To reconsider.
To reconsider.
Motion fails, so we will not be reconsidering the waiver.
Just seeing that it went that way, I think I'd like to make a comment about why I voted the way I voted.
Okay.
Because I think that the -- when we voted to reconsider the waiver, it was basically based upon the fact that the amount of impervious material that's being added to the site is minimal and that also the flow is towards the wetlands.
Right.
Predominantly towards the wetlands. So therefore, I think we fully evaluated that last time.
Along those lines, I don't remember hearing anything about a beaver pond in this homesite.
Beaver ponds come and go.
Yes. Okay, since that issue is done, I will reopen the public hearing on the five lot subdivision. Board members have had two weeks to look through things. We also have the road agent and the town engineer here this evening if you'd like their input.
Yes, that was one of the major questions that we had last time. And I see, no, he submitted a letter, but I don't know if he wants to speak on the...
Oh, do you want the road agent or would you like the town engineer first?
Whichever one wants to go first, I don't really...
Ah, they're drawing straws out there.
I want to hear the issue. I don't care in what order.
Sorry, I didn't get what -- Mike Povera, road agent, Newton, Hampshire. What's the question?
Well, we -- last time, we had questions about the inadequacy of the road and what possible remedies were being proposed.
Okay, and I'll defer that to the town engineer in a minute. But yeah, what I brought up the last meeting was the totality of the road. Where are we heading and what's the long-term intent for that road? Stay dirt, pave it? And they need to be looked at now because it's going to completely impact what we're going to do for right away. If we're going to pave it, there has to be drainage and outlets for the drainage, and I'm sure Mike has some concepts there. And one will be much more disruptive than the other, which will drag conservation into it. You'll have to cut more trees for one application, you know, it's one of those things. It's not -- listen, I understand progress, it moves on. You know, if we wanted to, we could buy the property and then Todd wouldn't have the ability to do it. But Todd bought the property, so here we are, and developments take place. I'm just bringing to the planning board that we just need to look at it as an entirety of what that road is going to end up being based upon the impact of more houses being built on that. So we'll look at some options that Mike has and, you know, start to review them or start to see which ones make sense.
I wonder if it might be right to let the applicant actually speak if there's anything regarding this? You guys wanted to bring comments in?
For those who don't know, this is Mike McNally, our town engineer.
Thank you.
And I'm just going to ask you if you'll speak loud enough for the mic because sometimes it doesn't get across to where it's going.
Is that better? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So at the road agent's request, I went out and looked at the road and saw and tried to get some idea in light of the fact that the subdivision's coming in, what could be done to the roadway, what maybe some of the deficiencies are. It's obviously a very beautiful road. It's very scenic, tree-lined on both sides, really nice. I could see why they want to build some houses down there. So you probably don't want to change that character too much. The problem with dirt roads is that they function best if there's some kind of drainage on the side of the road, which this one lacks in a lot of locations. Some areas, it's kind of in the middle of the development, I'm not sure exactly where it is, it goes up and over around a curve, and on both sides there, there's like a swale or a slope on either side, with very little place for the road to run off. It is on the top of the hill, so there's not that much water there. But there's other places where there's kind of a wind draw along the side of the road where water can collect now and probably does. It doesn't look too bad now because it's summertime. In the wintertime, it's snow piles and ice and everything, it could get a lot worse. And I think that's when -- where Mike has an issue maintaining the road. So without -- so it's really, if you're going to install -- so to me, the big issue out there is not whether it's gravel or paved, that's a town decision, it's sort of how you want your road to be. It's a -- if there's a road out there and it doesn't have any kind of drainage system, which this one doesn't, a lot of gravel roads don't, but a lot of gravel roads do. The gravel roads that hold together well have some kind of a roadside swale or something to get the water off the surface of the gravel roads, if they're all over the state like this. So on this one, I think you basically have two options. One is to build a swale on the side of the road, which would require probably cutting trees down the entire length of the way, which I'm guessing would be considered pretty unacceptable to most people, if you didn't know what the way to fit it in there. Or the other is to put some sort of a closed drainage system in there. And you know, whose responsibility this is, I'm not even -- that's for you to decide, not me. But put some kind of a closed drainage system in, which makes you -- means you can make the road much tighter, much narrower. You wouldn't need a roadside swale, let's take a berm over on the side or something like that, or some kind of a by-two-minute curve, and then put some catch basins and pipe in. The downside to that is you need to pave the road to do it, otherwise it won't function properly, and it costs a lot more money. So, you know, for me, I look, I don't know if you look at driveway site distance and all that, but when you go up and over that hill, it's, it looks like it's pretty steep and kind of up and over a curve there, that's what I'm most concerned about. And then as I drive up and down the section, if I'm in the right place, it looks like there's, you know, the road, it's generally slopes from one side to the other, and like you mentioned before, it all does slope down toward the back there, away from the road eventually. But I'm more concerned about is the gutter that gets formed now where the soils that are there. And when you start cutting driveways through that, people coming and moving and turning around, gravel roads like that can be problematic if not properly drained. So that was kind of my opinion. I think the gravel roadway, and I see them all over the state, and they function very well if they have some kind of a, nothing elaborate, but some kind of a drainage that can get the water off the road, and this one does not. So I think that's, I think that's what you were concerned about. And so there's a couple of improvement options that you could do. There was one more thing we looked at, there was a, I think, a conservation area, parking area on the other side of the road, that really the only way to drain it is across your property, so there may be some discussion that will possibly give you an easement to do that. And that's pretty much what we looked at. I think that's more or less what this little memo says. And is anything else, Mike?
No.
That was it? Any questions?
I'm sure there are a lot. Questions for the town engineer?
I just had one comment about, I'm not sure if that's a conservation parking lot. I think it's always been there, so I don't know, conservation, I don't think put it there. It's just a natural spot where people might have stopped, right? Yeah.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure who's there.
Yeah, so it's not the conservation that put that there or anything.
It is on the opposite road of the side of the subdivision, is a town-owned property.
Right, so I don't know where that little parking lot. Further down, there's a gate, I think that's where the conservation ends, and that lot might be down there, but I don't think it's on the conservation, you'd have to, you know, double-check that.
I think that little parking area is across from where your development is, so...
Yeah, further down. Well, I don't know, the dump side, but the transfer station end?
If the town chose to in the future, there would be, there's really no way to go the other way with the drainage, it has to go that way, so it might be nice if the applicant would go after that, but throwing it out there.
Any other questions for the town engineer?
Mike just brought up that area for conservation and parking, and you're right, I don't think it was ever established as a parking area, but I think in these conversations, that should be brought up. Because I can tell you wholeheartedly, and it's not just New Hampshire, it's Massachusetts, horse trail is pulling there, and it becomes problematic if there's four cars parked in there. In a snow situation, it's almost impossible, because they'll park in there and I bet you there isn't, just barely enough room for us to get plows through there. So I think you need to look at that and either designate parking that accommodates a conservation or eliminate it altogether. Because right now, it's the gray area. You know, they half-park in the road and they half-park in a spot that's just been kind of worn down over the years, and they've just been using it on a pretty regular basis, actually. And I think, I don't know about hunters, but there's a fair amount of vehicles that park out there different parts of times of the year.
And it is conservation land on that side, like you said, so we are encouraging people to use it, so.
And that's what I mean.
We don't want to tell them not to, but...
Again, this is one thing in the totality of the road to take into consideration if we're going to talk about it.
I think that's the grand thing on this whole development is that road. Has it, is it time to make it bigger or better, or is it in our master plan? You know, should we do it slowly? I think that's the whole big my problem with, not problem, but discussion we should have about that road and this development, and who's going to pay for what? And I, you know, the town already said it should be a scenic road, so it's one of our last, you know, really scenic ones. So I don't know what the pros and cons and what we can do to help keep it that way or how we work with whoever.
So because it's a scenic road, a lot of it's in the purview of the Conservation Commission.
Right. But, I mean, as far as, yeah, so if you want to widen it, so we have to give you permission, but like, do we want to widen it, or can we have the developer who wants to put the houses there pay for half of it? Or, you know, I don't know the logistics of how we can improve it or whatever.
No, and that's why we're here.
Yeah.
Because I'm not 100% sure of where the burden may lie or partial parts of the burden may lie.
Right.
It's really, it's very narrow.
Yes.
I don't think you want to widen it to 2.4 or something like that, but a couple I can be talking about. You get it out so that they can keep, you can have a chance to try, so I think that is the reverse, people film back and forth, and back out and stuff like that, but it's pretty tight today, so a couple I can be talking about.
Yeah, and the way that you've looked at the road like I have, and I think everybody in the road, I mean, in the room has looked at the road, it's problematic because it's narrow to start with. And then in the winter, for winter maintenance, it's a dug-in road box. So we have no place to wing the snow off that road, so that 16 feet becomes 14, 13, 12. It becomes a pretty narrow road during the winter. But Sandy, you summed it up. This is to look at the, you know, one, where we're going with this and how it's going to turn.
That's good.
So with regard to scenic roads, that actually, the real restriction of scenic roads is cutting of trees and moving of stone walls. That's really what a scenic road is there to protect. It's a town-owned road, and the entire length of the road is a town-owned, so generally, it would be up to the town to come up with the plan to make any improvements, decide whether it should be paved or not. Typically, when off-site improvements are required for a development, it's only the section of the road as related to that development. Sometimes, if it's a gravel road, you pave up to that driveway. This is sort of in the middle of the road, which is a little unusual, so how that is dealt with and whether that means you go the more expensive option or the less expensive option for requiring an off-site mitigation, that's up to the planning board. There are options where you could set a, an amount of money gets determined that the town could put into a fund. It almost acts like an impact fee. It's not an impact fee, but it's an off-site, where it would be designated for use of improving this road when a better plan is developed for what the town is going to do, and you use those funds to offset that cost a little bit as it relates to this development, because you'd be hard-pressed to make this property owner upgrade the entire road, whatever that means, based on this one development. That doesn't mean you can't require some off-site mitigation. And as far as any sort of drainage, swale, easement, or something to that effect, that could be part of this discussion, it could be done after the fact. An actual easement is kind of the low-hanging fruit on this for any parking upgrades, but the parking upgrades probably can't be used as an off-site mitigation project for this type of project. It doesn't mean it can't be sort of rolled into a, if you're going to do things, do them right.
Other questions for the road agent will be town engineer before. Roger, you look like you want to ask something.
No, I just have, you know, I can't see, until someone proposes a plan to do something with the road, I can't see putting any more houses on there. So I'm sort of looking for, okay, who's going to make a proposal for what the road, what should happen to the road?
Yeah, I'm going to answer this one. Listen, I don't, I don't think the town has any problem proposing what's done to the road, but it's going to be a joint decision. I've had more than one resident in town in the past two weeks, because, and this will be no surprise to anybody in the room, this becomes a hot topic. Once it gets out there, it is the last, I guess, true scenic dirt road that we have in town. I mean, everything else is paved or it has changed dramatically since that was done. And they asked me, why doesn't go on a town warrant? And asked the people in town what they want to do with it. I'm not saying I'm far or against that, don't stone me at the podium here. I'm just saying there are residents in town that think it should be put in front of the voters in town because it's such a, a big issue for a little town like Newton. And that's not to take the jurisdiction away from conservation or the planning board, that was just their, what they threw at me. And I said, you know what? I'll mention it to the planning board.
If they were, if someone were to do that, you'd have to come up with a dollar amount of whatever they're proposing to do with the road.
Absolutely. Yeah, which can be done. I mean, Mike and I have worked over the past 10 or 11 years doing dollar amounts on roads that we reconstruct every year under the pavement or, you know, reconditioning of the town roads. This would be no different. It's just we need to, and I'm not saying at this meeting, but we need to come up with what the flavor is that we're looking to do with that road. Keep it dirt or we're going to pave it? But some improvement, I'm just telling you, I'm standing here at the podium and I'm telling you, some improvement needs to be done.
And I totally agree with that. I think definitely some improvement needs to be done, and I'm looking for someone to propose what improvement they want to push forward. And I have, I've heard some, I haven't really heard that yet. I've heard some possibilities, but...
Yeah, and I can tell you, in this meeting, standing here, I don't have one that I'll propose. I can do it, you know, shortly, probably at the next planning board meeting, but this was a fact-finding mission.
Yeah, right.
So in the last one, we just said we'd bring the town engineer in, look at some of the thoughts that we had, and we can progress from there. No, not an issue.
Ms. Ralston?
I mean, this is either for Mike or the road agent. If you were to do the option where you would put in the paved swale, do some tree removal, and then in two years, the town wanted to do, go ahead and pave the road, would that be have been wasted money?
It's not that, no. As long as you have the drainage, you're going to put it in, it's going to be there, so.
Okay.
But if you don't need the gravel, you're supposed to put it, I think, you could have a...
Can you talk at the podium?
If you, if you're going to build a roadside swale and it's going to be a gravel road, that makes sense. You can also have a roadside swale next to a paved road, but putting catch basins and pipes in on a gravel road, you can't really do it because they fill up with gravel almost immediately, so it doesn't really work. So in this case, you know, if you, I guess, I mean, I look at that road and I think, well, this is a really pretty road. So I'd kind of hate to see this really nice tree-lined road become not tree-lined, and that's the only way you can get a roadside swale on there. You have to cut the trees down on the side. And it's not just one or two, it's, you know, it's probably eight feet out or something like that from where it is now, so it's a lot of trees. So that's what, so when, you know, Mike is just saying, well, we're not sure what to propose here, it's more, it's not so, it's not so much, you know, so much engineering as sort of quality of life and what you want the road to look like. So it's beyond a decision that an engineer and I think a road agent can make on their own. So it's really some, somebody else that, I mean, it's really the planning board or people at the town need to decide, you know, what kind of, what this road is going to look like. And I'm just saying, I think, as the road itself, it needs some kind of a, some kind of a drainage system, someplace for the road to the snow, to the plow and everything's like that, so it needs some improvements.
But to follow up on what Jim asked, if you did widen the road to put in the swales and then later decided to pave it, would it, are we talking about the same width or would you have to widen it some more if you were going to pave it?
I think either way, it'd be about the same width. The width isn't, what's driving the amount of impact out there to the trees isn't so much the width of the road, it's more of how are you going to build the drainage system, the way I see it, anyway. So if you're going to build a swale or a roadside ditch, it takes space to do it. It just takes space. And then you have, basically, you have the edge of the road and you have, you know, an area that goes up very steeply on either side right now. So if you're going to take those out and make it so that the road drains into those areas, then that has to be, that big chunk of land has to come out, and there's trees on top of that. So that's, that's what has to change. But if you do build a roadside swale and it's gravel and decide to pave it later, it should be fine.
Okay. One of the things that we have to remember is that the ultimate decision on the entirety of Curryville Road, to hold up one developer, because the question came up at this point, would be an unfair, I believe it'd be an unfair hardship and probably they would go to the ZBA and have us overturned, because nobody complained when any of the other houses were built on.
But at some point, you have the straw that breaks the camel's back.
Exactly.
You can't just say, oh, we're going to have one more, we're going to have one more, we're going to have one more.
Right.
That's where you end up with a disaster.
I know, but you have to remember, we can't, we can't look at the remainder of the road and say, because other parts of Curryville Road are inadequate, I mean, we can, we can make the developer improve the area in front of his development, but I don't think that we can say, yes, you're going to have to pay to either pave Curryville Road or completely solve the problem there.
Yeah, but the road as it exists cannot support the additional development on that road.
In the area where he wants to develop.
Well, I think that's the question you need to come to first, is is this simply too much the way the road currently exists? Or are there improvements that can be made that makes it so this is an acceptable situation while the town decides what they want the full fate of this road to be? And some of your decision for can this road be improved somewhat may impact the quality of it as a scenic road, and you've got to decide if that trade-off is worth it.
I think at this point, it'd probably be a good idea to hear from the developer.
Real quick, and we'll let Dennis up here in a minute. What you said, Jim, is correct, but I'm not trying to advocate that we hold up the developer on his, on his project, not at all. What I'm trying to do here is, I believe the developer needs to contribute some portion of that road, which would be in front of the lots that he purchased. We have to figure out what we're doing with the whole road in order to tell the developer what his equitable share of those improvements would be.
So in that scenario, if you don't know what you want yet, that's where it might make sense to assign a, literally a dollar amount that could be used towards doing whatever is ultimately going to be done with Curryville.
Yeah, but you don't...
So it wouldn't hold up his, you do have the impact of, you may have the houses that are here that are continuing to cause a problem on this road. That would mean the town needs to figure out what they're going to do with the road in a timely fashion, and there's not a whole, there's not a very good way to quantify that, and there's no guarantee. That's sort of the problem.
But the other thing is, to assign that dollar amount, you need to know where you're going. Because it's a different dollar amount if you're going to put in a swale than if you're going to, if you're going to put in underground drainage, or if you're going to, if you're going to pave it. I mean, all of those things are different dollar amounts, so if you don't have a plan, you can't assign a dollar amount to put in there.
Then you would need to come up with something reasonable on some spectrum of that scale, and I can't tell you what that dollar amount would be.
What's the area, I'm lost for words, what's the zone for?
It's residential...
The road?
Yeah.
Class five.
If you put five house lots there, I drive around, there's a lot on the side of them. People are parking trailer trucks, they're, somebody's going to come and ask me, I want to run a business out of here, an oil company, you know?
It's not, it's not zoned for that.
No. You can't?
No, it's zoned for residential.
Yeah, but that, you still have a home-based business.
Right.
Correct, but there's restrictions as to what that can be.
It's a class-five road, what's the weight limit?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I think we're apples and oranges right now. No disrespect, Zig, but I think we kind of going around the bomb. I, being selfish here, I just want to talk about the road.
But I'm talking about people who buy a house and then they change...
Which would be a different fight for a different group of people.
But if we start up, you know, front, you know, if they don't have, if it's just a classified road.
Yeah, and that's all I'm talking about, is a classified road. The town accepted that dirt road as a classified road. It's not a classification issue. And I don't, would have to pick out folders and find out when it was accepted by the town as a classified road, but it is. I know that to be factual. I'm just trying to get what we just talked about now. I need a dollar amount, and I'm going to be instrumental with the engineer on assessing a dollar amount of that road. I just need some help figuring out, pave the dirt. I guess I'm just going to, let's make it simple. Pave the dirt. Those are the two options. The rest is logistics and how we shape the road.
But in either case, you're going to have to cut down a lot of trees and put in some drainage.
Oh, I think you're cutting trees either way. Sorry. But I think you're cutting trees either way.
Yeah.
More to the left.
Yeah, one is going to be more than the other, but I mean, this is going to break down to pave the dirt.
Well, which one is more?
Cost? Is that what you're asking?
Or trees?
Oh.
The swale is more trees.
The swale will be more, the swale will be more trees.
Okay, because what, if you paved it, then you could put pipe in and...
Catch basins.
Catch basins.
I'm waiting for you.
I'm inviting you. Come on, you're up.
Wait for you. I thought you said you wanted to wait till you were done.
So, so there's a couple of issues here that I think...
Mr. Quintal, the...
Oh, Dennis Quintal, yeah. And talking...
I thought you said you wanted to wait till you were done.
Well, I'm done. So, so there's a couple of issues here that I think...
Mr. Quintal, the...
Oh, Dennis Quintal, yeah. And talking to the applicant here, there's a couple of issues here that are pertinent, and, and we just need to come to some resolution here. If the, if the subdivision goes through the way it is, each lot will own right up to their frontage, as shown on the plan here. When, when the lots get developed, driveways are going to go in. The natural grade from the street is into the lot, and all the drainage from the edge of the roadway will go into the driveways. Some of the air, some of the places where the driveways are going to go aren't cut right now, but they will be opened up. So there's sections where each driveway is going to go, which is going to open up for drainage to come off the edge of the road. So that's, that's one point I wanted to make. Another point I wanted to make is that I've heard discussion at the last meeting and this meeting about the condition of the road, and there is gravel there, but you heard your road agent say that there's not enough, and that there are some spots in there that is very thin. So the, the, the amount of frontage in front of these lots is, is close to 1,000 feet. And there's a lot of the roadway that's 18 feet, and some of it is 16 feet, and the areas that could be widened within the right-of-way could be widened now as best you can. And, and the applicant, Mr. Fitzgerald, is willing to add gravel on the road, six to eight inches, which is typical for a surface covering of gravel for that section of roadway. And with that, I'm sure with the guidance of the road agent, or whether he actually does the work or not, put a good crown in the road, put some good gravel on there with a good crown on it, and that would develop into a swale on the edge of the road, so the water isn't coming and pocketing in and causing puddles and making potholes. And by doing that, you'd be creating a swale if there isn't room enough for a swale. But where there is room for a swale, you can, you can make swales in where, in the front of these lots, near where the edge of the driveways are, so that water can go into the edge of the driveways and onto the lot and drain toward the rear of the lot. So that's, that's, that's an option that Mr. Fitzgerald is willing to do, and, and it would be quite an expense to do that, but he's willing to do that. I don't believe it's in the best interest of the town to think about paving it at this time. And I think if there's going to be some widening of the road for future drainage or something like that, that's a possibility. However, if you don't provide space for that now, you're going to have a real problem trying to be able to cut the trees on the bankens and cut the trees that are needed to be done to put the swales in. So the alternative here, I think, and it's been done in a number of towns when I've made an application like this, is to put an easement across the front of all of these lots. And it is a grading and drainage easement. That way, in the future, when the town decides to make a big decision about changing the character of that road from a scenic road to something that's more of a throughway, and, and it seems to me that's going to take either a vote of the town, or it's going to take quite a bit of money to do that. If, if that's what the town wants, they want to be, would want to be able to, to do that. And not go, at that point in time, and try to knock on people's door in each lot and say, we need to take some of your property and take those trees down. So I'm proposing that we put grading and construction drainage easement across the front of the property, which I think Mr. Fitzgerald would agree to do, so that the town in the future would have the ability to cut the trees, to move the stone walls, create a swale, do what you want to do. But it just seems like, at this point in time, it's above and beyond the vote of just the planning board to make a decision on changing the character of that road, because that's one of the reasons why Newton is the way it is, and that's one of the reasons why Rockingham County is the way it is, and, and that's the way New Hampshire is, is we want to keep scenic areas scenic. And this is not a through road, it should not be a through road. It should be just a road where people either live in the neighborhood, can go through or whatever. But I'm not saying that that, a through road shouldn't be made in the future, and who knows what the town plans or what the region plans for a roadway through there. Just making a, a suggestion for the planning board that Mr. Fitzgerald could put an easement across the front of his property in all of these lots, so that if the decision was made in the future, then you would have the ability to do that without having to take legal action against each landowner for an eminent domain situation. And so I think that that would cure your future problem. I think graveling the road, adding six to eight inches of gravel would certainly help as far as the condition of the road at this point in time, maintaining it for the, for the future. As far as swales and ditches, we could certainly work on that to any certain degree. There's the specific question that, that's right here in between the lot lines. You can see the contours and the grading here, where it's a natural swale, right down this property line, that's where the water runs right now. The driveway is going to be, on this lot, could be right near there, so it could drain this whole frontage area there. This driveway here also has a, has a drainage away from the road, so that driveway obviously could be opened up a little bit if there's not too many trees there, work around the trees. So we could, we could, we could make it appealing to the Conservation Commission and try to maintain the natural characteristics there, the trees that are there now, but still solve the problem of, of a drainage issue there and the quality of the road by adding gravel. So just something for you to talk about, and I'll let you talk about it, and if you have any other questions, I certainly can answer them.
I got one, one question about, for, for the road, but probably, I don't know, you can answer the road agent. Right, right now, how wide is the town's right-of-way? You know, you're talking about getting an easement, but actually, in a road, how much of it, how much of the road belongs to the town?
I, I'm guessing that legally, the, Mike, Mike's coming up, but this...
I can answer it this way, I can't answer specifically. In the state of New Hampshire, a minimum right-of-way is two rods wide. A rod is 16 feet.
So, so, so the town has...
I've been corrected, 16 and a half.
Okay. So, so the town has 33 feet of width that they could work within without, without knocking on doors and getting easements from, from the owners?
Right.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you have to remember, the Courierville Road is one of those roads where originally people's property lines went to the central line of the road, and the town technically did not have two rods. So right at the moment, the town basically owes what, owns what you see. In order to establish exactly where the two rods are for width, somebody like the road agent would have to go out, establish a central line in the road, and measure 16 and a half feet in both directions, which might be more towards one side than the other.
I am, but I'm not doing it.
Excuse me, what?
Somebody more like Dennis.
No.
But that's why I'm, I'm saying, is that quite often we find that the, the land that the town owns, the road is not straight down the middle. On something like this, because it's never been established previously, we would actually have to go in and establish it and look at people and say, yes, you're, the end of your driveway, what have you, is town property.
But you, you don't have to ask them, you end up telling them.
Well, exactly, but you, you then have to do a lot of deed research and what have you.
Roger, to your point, and keep it simple, if they're offering to put that in a plan, I would jump all over them.
Yeah, but, but I mean, my question, it goes for the rest of the road, you're going to have the, you know, because you can't, to make the swale work, you can't just put the swale in front of five houses. It's going to have to...
No, there would have to be swales in front of a lot of properties.
And, and, and so that, that's sort of my question is...
Yeah, to make the total system work, depending on how the contours go and where the high points are, yeah, yeah.
The idea is you wouldn't have the fight over these properties. And the town owns on the other side of the road already, so...
Right.
I say something?
I mean, right, right now, once we take jurisdiction, we can only say what this developer has to do along on the front of his property.
Just, you've already accepted jurisdiction.
Right. Which reminds me, that also means that there's a time ticking.
Right.
Yeah.
Did I say something?
Yes.
I believe that the extra gravel on the road and the easements sounds like a very good idea, because, like I said the last time, I don't think it's fair to hold this developer up for what he wants to do when he bought a legitimate piece of property. He's allowed to do what he's doing where he is, and it's not his fault that the town has concerns with the rest of the road. I think this is a good discussion to get a catalyst for the town to do something about the road, whether it's a warrant aid, warrant article or not, but I don't think that's fair for the developer because, you know, to ask him to do something in front of his own road, that's one thing, but the whole road is not his responsibility.
And we're not, I never approached this podium and portrayed that. It's never been, it's never been my...
But it's, I know you have not, but it sort of sounds like it's going there. Other people may be understanding it that way. And I, I don't think he should wait for the town to...
Okay, so we'll rein him back in, because that's not the intent. My intent is selfish. As road agent, I've got two jobs to fulfill. One is for the totality of the taxpayers in town and how we spend our money. And two, not to have my phone ring. And what I mean by that is, you put more houses on that road, on that road, I get phone calls now through the air because it's potholes and beat up and it's a dirt road. This will just exacerbate, this will just exacerbate that as far as more people coming in. They, and listen, we can tell them all day, you bought a house on a dirt road. Probably not going to fly after they start bottoming out their car or whatever the case may be. So the phone will ring more, so I'm being selfish here. And I'm not asking the developer to do the whole road. I just want to come up with a concept so we know what that needs to be done in front of that. If it's gravel, and I think we should keep it gravel. Want my opinion? I think we should keep it gravel. But that's a maintenance thing for the highway department. There's more maintenance to gravel, but it, it won't change the complete look of that area. Because it does look nice, I don't think anybody in this room would disagree. It looks great. It's an old dirt road in, in the state of New Hampshire. But I need some help here. I'm not going to be the guy making the sole decision.
No, the, the planning board will be, actually, I'm going to look at the planning board and say, what do you think of Mr. Quintal's proposal regarding the easement along the front of the property and to, I wouldn't say upgrade, but to improve the area in front of the lots, which is, Mr. Zalinski?
The way I heard it, it has an easement on his side, but how about on the opposite side of the road?
That's town property.
It's town road. It's town property.
But we wouldn't be touching on spending any money if that developer wasn't there. But now you're asking us to do the opposite side of the road. Sounds like a lot of trees coming down, and that's putting an expense on the town. Not, you know, not that I'm, I'm not against the developer, but just saying, you know, the road is...
No, it's going to put an additional expense on the town. There's no question about that.
We spoke once before, you do twice a year a big maintenance on there.
Four times. We run the road grader down there four times a year.
How much more do you think they have to do?
I'm throwing a dot at the dot board. I, I don't know. It'll be more. Will it be one, will it be double? I, I don't know. There's going to be more traffic down there, and it's not just going to be the, listen, the residents that live down there now, there's, there's some sitting here in the room. As soon as I regrade that road and it's smooth and ironed out, more traffic goes down it. Soon as they know it's graded, they use it as a cut through. And unfortunately, if we pave it, it's going to become a real cut through on a regular basis, so, you know, I'm not advocating that we should do that, because it will, the traffic count in that road will increase exponentially. So dirt, it keeps the feel of what's down there, but I just need, you know, as a group, we need to make some, some type of a decision, and we'll run with it and then work with the developer and, and, you know, do in front of his lots.
I mean, the, the proposal that he had of just re-crowning the, the gravel, that, that's fine until the first time you grade it.
Do what?
When, when you go to regrade it again.
No, no, I grade it with a crown in it. I put a crown in it when I grade it every single time. Water is not our friend, whether it's dirt or pavement.
Ms. Roblin. Sure.
The other thing that's, that's important here that Mr. Quintal said was, is that the drainage on the road is going to go down the driveways. So most people don't want that in the driveways, but if it's clear on the plan, that's going to happen, and that it's permitted, and that the, the road will drain onto the driveways, that's, that's an important thing that should be any part of the plan or part of the decision or something. Because a lot of people will, will fight back, and they'll get out there and say, I don't want the water, the water from the road coming down to my yard, so they'll block it off or build a drive-through, something like that, so. So if that's going to happen, that will definitely help drainage on that side of the road, but it's something that really has to be clear on the plan so the town can, so, yeah, it has to go down there, and it's on your plan, it shows that way, so.
Ms. Roblin.
My suggestion is actually that if, if the planning board finds the graveling the road and then putting in the swale, or the drainage easements, a really feasible possibility, let Dennis and Mike talk with each other and come up with what would actually be the plan to do, execute that, so it would be part of the plan set. The notes would be added to the plan, it could be part of the easement language, could be, the easement itself could be part of a condition of approval. But, so you know what you would be potentially voting on to approve as a condition as to how the drainage would work with the driveways, where they would be located, and the specifications. I mean, as a theory, it sounds like it would be a really viable option. Maybe not, you may decide not, it's not, but let's actually get a plan as to what all of that is going to look like. Is it a 12-foot easement? Is it six to eight inches of gravel? That's kind of a big range. What is it really going to take? Where does the water need to go? Do the driveways need to be paved through the first, you know, 10 feet? Do there need to be other features added to it? So let engineers do what they do and engineer it. Or at least know what the plan would be.
Oh, that brings me to another question. Preliminary access permits for the entrance to or driveways to those lots. It says that the road agent can help or should figure out where those entrances are going to be. Have you ever done that before?
Well, it's really, on this, it's, I mean, most of the roads, it's a sight distance thing. We look at first, and off the top of my head, there might be one lot there that could be a sight distance, but I'm not sure. Those are the fixed driveways on that plan? Probably not, right? No, I have no problem working with them on that, where it goes, but that'll be integral in how this thing drains.
Right.
I mean, it's a typical driveway permit, you know, we do it on every, every lot.
Further planning board questions?
About this subject.
And, uh, does the applicant have anything further he would like to say?
Somebody in the audience...
My, my only one question is, if we give you two weeks, can you and Mr. Pevero get together and iron out a plan? Actually, can you use the microphone?
For now, I don't have any comments, but I didn't know if you wanted to have a butter's comment before we finalize it.
I want to get this out of the way before I open it up for about a comment.
And, and I'd be happy to work with the town engineer or Mr. Pevero as far as the location of the driveways, because they, they aren't cast in stone, and we typically look at minimizing the impacts of trees that need to be cut, but that has generally been the most important factor. But now it's not the most important factor, because we're talking about drainage of the roads, and that probably is more the most important factor at this point in time, is where the driveways are going to go and how that's going to improve the drainage for the drive, for the roadway. So we certainly can work on that and take a walk out there and pick a better spot than what I show on the plan, and I can modify that, show the easement across the front, and that can, that can be a condition of approval.
Of course. Okay. This time, are there any other comments? Ms. Brack? Break.
I was the one asking for the reconsideration of the waiver, but I did want to say that I don't think the road is that much of an issue. It's pretty good the way it is. It could be crowned a little higher, and the edges could be scraped toward the middle a little bit and contribute some material to the middle. We don't have any ditches along... We don't have any ditches along the side for drainage. Most dirt roads I've seen have, have a place along the edge of the wa, of the, of the road for the water to go without a whole lot of construction or destruction. I was looking at RSA's about scenic roads, they can be as narrow as 20 feet. And I don't know if anyone on the board has any expertise with matters of stormwater and drainage and things like that, or geology or environmental science. And I kinda wondered if any of you have walked out through that land and seen where the lot lines are and what the terrain is like. I asked Mr. Doggett last week where the elevations are for this corner of this lot. It's, it's about three quarters of the lot, and there's nothing there giving an elevation. He told me it's water. I have an aerial view of the, that end of the road and a little bit on Brookside, which shows the beaver pond, which has been there a very long time. There's no water there. If you're considering it water, it's, it's covered in trees. I can show it to you. So, if you're calling it water, I'm worried that someone can clearcut all that water and make it into a lake. I don't understand why there are no elevations there and why it's all trees from the aerial view. The water that comes through this area comes down, the closest place that we're familiar with is Rose Corner. Comes down in several different routes. There are ponds along the road, and I'm concerned that what we have here is considered water going through there. I wanna know how much the developer's allowed to raise the elevation of the ground on these lots, and if he's allowed to divert or reroute the water, because the water doesn't only go through that part that's marked water. There are several, you can see it on the aerial view where the trees look darker because that's where there's a little bit of a stream going through in several places. So, I don't know if he's allowed to bring in truckloads and truckloads of fill to avoid having a swamp around each house. I don't wanna see the road widened in my lifetime. I expect to be here another 30 years. I think that's way too, too many houses in too small a space, and it's so wet. I, well, I tried to go and see the beaver pond the other day because I haven't looked at it in a while, and I can't get through there because it's, you'd need waders and a machete. I would like to show you the aerial picture.
While she's doing that, I just wanna correct something. I didn't say that was standing water, I said that that was wetlands.
You said it was water.
I said it was wetlands.
It was wetlands, but should've had elevations, no?
No. No, we couldn't have had that.
Well, here we are. This is Courierville Road. This is Watherspoon's House. This is the other end of Courierville Road where the cemetery is, in Brookside Lane. There's no water in here. There's the beaver pond. Any of these dark lines are sometimes streams that are running into the part that goes under the road. It goes under the road here, it goes under the road at the other end of the road, and there might be another culvert around number 13, but I'm not sure. If it's wetlands, can they clearcut that?
That, that all depends, all depends on what the plan calls for.
I can answer that quickly.
Thank you.
You can cut trees in wetlands provided you don't disturb the surface or take any stumps out, and, and Mike can correct me if I'm wrong.
So, we're gonna give this up for a chance of a whole lot more water draining off all those properties, no trees to hold it back and absorb it, so that we can have this tiny little Levittown, and so many people driving in and out. And there is a sign at the end of the road that says there's a 10-ton weight limit. I don't know what concrete trucks weigh that are gonna be going over the 3x8 culvert. I think that's really gonna take a beating, it'll be, I might get a kick out of it if one of those trucks falls down into the creek, but it's because I'm kinda bitter about this whole idea. That's why I was concerned about stormwater. If you've seen the news this summer, places that have never expected to get flooded have had really amazing experiences. I've been, I've lived in a place where there was a little trickle of water that was always there that within 45 minutes filled in a chute that was probably 20 by 20. It washed these things away and ruined the whole. I think that's all, that's, I'm done.
Any other comments?
These are some things about small roads, and if we want to be in touch with New Hampshire about water management. Thank you. There are lots of links in there to your connected people.
Actually, New Hampshire Stream Crossing Initiative, isn't that your? Baby?
Why don't they have elevations on that?
Tricia McCarthy.
Hi, Tricia McCarthy, Conservation Commission, and I don't know if this will help or hinder everything that's going on. Nancy Salambo and I on conservation, we did walk Courierville Road. We met actually with Unitil and Mr. Fitzgerald to talk about buffers, maybe eight to 10 feet worth of buffers, and where telephone poles would go once the status of the planning board figures out what they're doing. We were very happy with that, but in now talking about dirt versus paving, which came up, and Mr. Doggett, you might remember, about 21 years I've been on conservation, and Nancy and I think that twice in that time. It was a warrant article and town voted that it couldn't be paved, that it had to stay dirt. So, it might be something we need to check just in case. Do you remember?
Quite honestly, I remember at least one attempt to, the warrant article was to pave it.
Right.
And it was turned down.
Right. So, I just wanted to toss that out there just in case.
I, I've left out most of my opinion this evening. If you'd like, I'll give it now. I think Satan would have ice cubes before the town would come up with the money to pave Courierville Road.
Really?
Quite honestly, I, I don't see any reason for ever paving it.
Right.
I believe the, Mr. Quintel has made a reasonable proposal for what could be done there along that stretch of road. I'm not certain how much it would, whether or not it's something that could be done without being a major expense to the town, because as I look at the gentleman sitting way in the back in the yellow jersey, I also know that his budget is not such that he is prepared to have any major expense added to it.
No, the budget, the book, yeah. I, I mean, here's the reality of it. I have so many paved roads that are deteriorating at a fast, rapid rate in a limited budget.
Exactly.
The odds of us getting to Courierville Road to do any major improvements won't be in my lifetime. It's just the reality of it.
And I'm older than you, so.
So, not in your lifetime either.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, if that answered the question.
So, consequently, I, I would like to see, my personal view, the town engineer or the, the road agent work with Mr. Quintel to come up with a plan that basically covers the stretch of road in front of those properties that makes it, them not exacerbate the situation that is there. Regarding the comment regarding the culvert that is under there, that's something that the, the road agent would have the information of.
The box cover?
Right, and whether, whether or not it could actually support it.
It's an H20 loading. I replaced that box cover nine years ago.
Could you explain what that means?
Which part?
An H something?
Oh, H20?
Yeah.
That's for highway loads. That is more than adequate to take any heavy traffic that goes up and down that. The old culvert that was in there, you probably remember, it had a hole punched in the middle of it, so.
But the water from the street beside that culvert?
Could it, I, 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 yeah.
It's too close to the top, right?
All right. Yeah. Could it exceed it? It could. I mean, I have no crystal ball on that one, but.
Well, it, it, was it, was the size designed to, what was, what was it designed to, to handle in terms of water?
We increased it one size from the pipe that was there, and that's all I can do.
So, you didn't calculate, you just sort of said, it, it was flooding out before, we'll make it a little bit bigger.
We made it bigger. And as, as of this date, you guys live closer to it than anybody.
It hasn't flooded since you guys-
Yeah, it has not flooded, and we've had some pretty good rain, so.
Well, it was at one time, it was low on the box, you had a closure.
Since the new culvert?
Yeah.
I never closed it.
Well, how long ago did you, did you- Since we did the holidays, it's made huge difference.
How long ago did you redo that culvert?
I think it's nine, it's eight or nine years since I've done that, yeah.
And any, any alteration to that culvert now would require Amicor of Engineer permits?
It would, yeah, it would require permits.
I'm just, I'm thinking of the one that happened in the western part of the town that turned into a waiting game that baby horses-
Oh, yeah, that was the arch culvert in Country Pond, yeah, that was quite a while. Yeah, it would go through permits and procedures, and it would be a lengthy process, yeah. But I mean, if the question is, can it take loads? It can take truck traffic. It's loaded, it's built to take the truck loads.
It depends on the road that I was reading.
That's an old sign, and you know what? I'm gonna leave it up. It'll minimize the amount of trucks that'll go down that road, so that's all it's for. It's not, it's not for that culvert. It's always been up there.
Ms. Ravel?
Just one thing, if there were, so one thing that's very typical on a project like this is for the board to require a road bond while construction is going on, so that if there were to be damage to the road caused by the construction, that there would be a bond in place for fixing it.
That's standard operating procedure. Further?
Well, I'll just have like my observation before we vote. So, I, I'm really glad that we might put this easement in there, but I'm wondering if we add it to the plan, it doesn't necessarily mean we're doing it tomorrow, like, you know, that's my point. If it gets there, like, people are gonna say, oh, we're doing that next week, or the people that buy the house, oh, we're gonna, you know, do this right now. I don't want it to lead into that, that because it's there, we're gonna start it right off.
Remember what Mr. Quintel said, and that was to improve the, the surface of the road as it exists now, and give input and easement for any future work that the town chooses to do.
I'm just making sure I'm, when I'm voting.
Yeah. Well, no, you're not voting on it tonight because they have, they have to write it, they have to change the plans and show the, all that information on the-
And I believe that if they're gonna do that easement, there has to be some language on the deeds that say the easement is deeded to the town, so that would be right on each individual lot deed.
Right, I understood that. I just didn't want people to think we're gonna do it tomorrow. Maybe we might, but we don't have to.
I mean, this is way beyond what you can do as a conditional approval.
One other question about the width of the road is, in your comments, you said that it was between 16 and 18 feet. Now, in, in, right in the area of these houses, are these proposed houses? Is that more like 16 or more like 18?
I'm not sure. It's 18 feet and both of them, probably.
I don't think it is, I don't think it is at the corner though. Yeah, but it probably is mostly 18 feet along that section. Yeah, yeah, show my picture here.
I'll show you, put your finger up. Gives you a little perspective.
Huh? We did at the corners. Yeah. No, it is 16, it is 16 feet in certain areas, no question about it, yeah. It's 12, it's 16 and 18.
But not, but not particularly in this part of, of the road.
It, it, I do seem to recall there is a bit of a cataract as you get to the top of the hill.
I've been by there, but I'm not super familiar with it, that's why I'm-
I've become more familiar with it recently than, I mean, I remember what it was like when I was a kid and we rode horses through there, but there were no houses at that time.
Right. But I'm still not really comfortable with, either the, the proposed improvements don't seem to address what the nature of the problem is.
I'm simply asking for a straw vote on whether or not we should have, does the board want the engineer and the applicant and the town, and the road agent to go ahead and develop a more detailed plan and show it on the, on the property plan, on site plan for the next meeting.
Can I make a comment? Regarding the easement, it's, it's easy to put on the plan, right across the front, a 15-foot grading and drainage easement, and that's typically what's done in other towns. And that, that should be significant enough to, with the additional road with there for the future if they ever choose to cut trees and make a ditch line. As far as that goes, so that's easy enough to put on the plan, and that's just a line drawn with the dimension on it and basically stating that it's a graded and drainage easement for the town. The, the proposal for graveling in front of this is, is a matter of, like I said, six to eight inches of gravel placed on the road, which would make the quality of the gravel that's there better and make it more stable, and hopefully wind up improving it to a certain degree that minimizes what the concerns are right now. I think you, looking at the worst-case scenario of trying to make it a paved road, is, is really not an avenue that's, would be acceptable because it's of a scenic road. So, that's why I think it's reasonable for the applicant to, to say, yeah, let's, let's add some gravel to the road, let's cure that problem right there, let's be able to work as far as where the driveways are gonna go. They're all sloping away from the, the street. Mr. Fitzgerald's gonna build the, the houses himself, he's gonna build the driveways himself, so he'll make the driveways go away from the gravel road, and they have to be acceptable to the road agent and the planning board and the, and the building inspector because they all signed the occupancy permit. So, they all have to drain away from the street. I don't know what I could do as far as drawing more than that on the plan. I can show the easement, grading and drainage easement across the front for the benefit of the town. I can, I can, I can show on the plan, six to eight inches of gravel being placed on the roadway at the, at the applicant's expense, whether he does it or whether he puts money into an account that the road agent can utilize to, to, to do that section of roadway. That's, that's something that can be worked out afterwards. That's, that's something that can be worked out afterwards, but that's, that can be just part of a conditional approval. And so that's why I think that, I don't know what more I could do on the plan to say that.
But that's why, you believe it's conditional approval. I, I believe that some of that language is very specific, and I would not leave that up to conditional. That, to me, I need to be able to read that and have it verified by the, the road agent and the...
Who, who makes that, who makes that up then?
What I was proposing was that within the next two weeks, you meet with the road agent and/or the town engineer, and the road agent knows what would need to be done to improve that section of road.
I'm just gonna spin off of what you said. To expedite this, you don't need three wheels in this equation.
Okay.
The town engineer and Dennis can work with that and expedite that faster than me being in the loop. I'll review it if there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to look at it.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you need to at least review it.
Put those two guys together and expedite it and get it done. Yeah. And I just asked Mike, he has no issues with doing that.
Okay. That, that needs to be done, it has to be blessed by the road agent, and then quite honestly, most of us that are sitting on this board have been around long enough that we would like to be able to read it before we just bless it.
I would, I would propose that there'd be some amount, dollar amount to for a road bond.
Correct.
So we would have that figure at the same time for that section of road.
In the improvements or in case of damage?
In case of damage.
I think both.
That's a different subject, right?
Right, well, I mean, I think what you're gonna, I think what you're gonna talk about in the beginning is, you know, what the improvements are and how much that's gonna cost or whatever, but we also need a, a road bond for any damage.
Right, there would be a road bond concerning the existing, it's... In case that there is damage to the existing road, bringing it back to its present day existence, and then there needs to be paperwork, and actually, there would probably be a bond, a completion bond for the, the improvement of that stretch.
Is there damage in the road line, sorry, I don't know what it's called.
Okay. Ms. Rowden?
I mean, these are all things that you could have the conditional, conditional for an approval, but if you want it to, if you want more detail before you actually vote, then you can request the information and then continue this application. You are at this point under the 65-day clock, about 30 days has gone by, kicking it out in the next week.
I was just gonna say, we have 37 days left before the clock runs out.
Yeah.
So I threw out there asking if people were happy with that idea or if anybody wants to make any other motions.
Any altogether or just on this thing?
Excuse me?
Just on this one thing, about putting that on there?
No, 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 no. We have, we've taken jurisdiction of the plan.
Right.
We're now at the point we can either do a conditional approval, and somebody has to be able to list all the conditions, or we send the applicant and the town engineer away to develop all of the, the stuff that they, they brought up and bring it to our next meeting, at which time we would probably have enough, hopefully have enough information to make a final decision.
Is there anybody else in the audience who wants to say anything?
I had asked, and I saw no hands go up.
Nobody else?
But I'll, I'll ask again.
Okay.
Would anybody else like to? Okay.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing until whatever the date is, two weeks from now.
For them to bring back the information that we talked about?
October 10th, October 9th.
Yep. Okay, is there a second?
A second?
Discussion.
Ms. Quintel?
I just wanna be clear about what, what we're gonna be bringing back to the next meeting, 'cause obviously I can draw a line for an easement, that's easy enough to do. As far as a, as a, as a bond for any damages to others, the other sections of the road other than this, that's certainly something that we can work out.
Right.
That's, that's just a number that we would work out. The improvements in front of this piece of property, we've already talked about, that that is gonna be done, and we can come up with a dollar value for that. So realistically, at the next meeting, I would think that I would, you know, if we do continue this to the next meeting, you'd see a line across here, and you'd have numbers for the bonding for the improvements, any damages, and, and also a number for the...
Well, there would also have to be a note for the, any improvements you do in front of those. Your mention about adding gravel and what have you along that stretch, that needs to be a note on the plan. There were some issues that were brought up at the last meeting about not clearcutting and various things that I would hope to see some sort of notes on, on the plan.
That's what I'm after, is trying to find out exactly what you're gonna want so that I can provide you with something at the next meeting, if that's what you were looking for, so that we don't wind up and do a debate next, this next meeting.
The, the idea is that you take everything that has happened at the last public hearing and this public hearing, and hopefully add it to the plan and bring back...
Obviously, there's no cutting of trees, it's a scenic road, so we can't cut trees that are right along the, the front, right away. So that's, that's part of, so I don't know what other notes you'd wanna put on as far as tree cutting is concerned, so...
I, I had brought up, and we, we had a very short discussion at the last meeting, about, you know, the possibility of leaving some trees in between properties rather than going in and clearcutting everything straight across so that lawns run into lawns. I think people deserve to have the right to have mature, more mature trees left along property lines and what have you.
That's a hard note to add.
Well, I have no problem with taking out dead trees and what have you, but, you know, it's nice to leave some sort of a buffer between the two.
I'm not sure I can put anything like that on the plan because that's discretionary, and, and, and the applicant has heard that, and, and he would probably try to do the best he can with, with something like that, complying with that, but that's, that's not a very easy, easy thing to put on a plan for me, to put on a plan. If you wanna have specific wording, then I'll, I'll accept that, but I, I, I don't know how I can come up with something like that very easily.
I mean, unless you want something that says there should be, you know, a 10-foot buffer of trees left along each lot line, unless you got that specific, I don't think having a keep as many trees as you can clause is...
Well, I, I, I'm not, I'm, I would like to see something like a 10-foot buffer between each piece of property left.
Are you making a motion?
No.
No.
You're making a discussion.
Well, you said you wanted to see it.
But this way...
So is it a motion or are you just asking?
No, it, it, we, we don't do motions about that, but is that something that anybody else would like to see?
I would, I think the less trees they cut, they'd be a lot better for the, you know, drainage and the animals and, you know, water and air and whatever, but unless you say, you know, keep 10 feet, I guess they'll probably cut what they want.
And we have the power to, to do that, but we, we would need a motion.
We would need a motion.
As the chair, I, the chair doesn't...
So that doesn't, that doesn't need to be a motion, but that needs to be a, at this point, at least a consensus that that's something you want put on the plan?
I tried a straw poll earlier, and that went nowhere, so I figured maybe we need a motion. Do other people agree with that idea?
Would you like that idea?
I travel Chase Road, I can see one end of the road and the other end of the road now. Are these people gonna move into these homes? Is there gonna be no wood except across the street? I don't, you know, I'm just saying on the last poll...
Well, typically when a, a development like this, well, typically when a development goes in like that, there's selective cutting, okay, and, and a lot of times it's an aggressive cut, and, and a lot of people say that's, that's not a good thing. But I gotta tell you that what we need for the environment is diversification of, of wildlife, for wildlife, and, and you, you saw the picture earlier that there's trees on this whole area, so, and with a, a large canopy of trees like that, that's not much understory, okay, because I think you need an understory for the small wildlife animals, the rabbits and the, and the birds that make nest near the ground. So when you see an area that is selective cutted, cut and aggressively cut, within a few years, that understory grows up, and you get a nice, small growth of vegetation that provides a better environment, to tell you the truth, and that's why conservation commissions, we work in East Kingston on doing timber harvest, and we look at these factors, and we say, "We want that diversification. You want to cut trees, you want sunlight to come in so that the understory will grow up." So when you see selective cutting and aggressive cutting like that, it's not a bad thing, okay, and you'd like to see some big tall trees left to maintain a canopy, but then again, people that are living there and, and buying homes that are brand new, they don't wanna have trees that are hanging over that could fall over, over their home or into their backyard, which is gonna present, prevent, present to them an added expense for cleaning up when they're probably, you know, don't have a lot of money to spend on, on maintaining large trees. So, so, again, I, I'm not sure how I can put a wording on a plan to say minimal cut within 10 feet of a property line, when it, it really is something that is, is something that is, is, when somebody does it, it's a, it's, it's a give-and-take thing, so, so it's subjective.
However, I understand your argument, however, when this becomes a sea of lawn, there is no understory growth. It becomes mown lawn with, that supports no wildlife.
And, and I think people should have the right to do that. If they wanna have a lawn through their whole backyard up to the edge of wetland, then they have a right to do that.
They have the right to do it, however, this being a scenic road, it would be far preferable for me, and I, that's why I'm asking the rest of the board, if there is some sort of a natural buffer between houses that could be left, 10-foot?
Is it the, but just, is it in between the houses or between the road and the houses?
Between the road and the house is an automatic one because they can't... Correct me if I'm wrong, Trish, there is a certain distance off the center of the road that they cannot take down trees. I, I'm suggesting that to make it more scenic and less of a, it, trees left between houses, I mean, we do it in other areas of town requiring no cut buffers and what have you.
That, that's a more typical thing to put in for buffering, commercial from residential.
However, when some of the developers have commented about, you know, have used disparaging words, this might make it look a lot better.
Can I jump in on the tree conversation? I hate to, but I have to. I don't want the same condition as we ended up on Chase. You guys cleared out back, which is, it is what it is, it changes the whole block instantly, and it's a shock value, but don't leave me a strip of trees between the road, even if it's in that easement area, because it gets costly. I'm rebuilding Chase right now. I've got no place for swills. Those trees in the front should have gone. I, I've got no place to put the water except for down the driveways, so, and I know this is conservation and you're gonna be involved in it, please don't leave me... First of all, I think it looks foolish. You get a little strip of trees in a big wide open field. If we're gonna do it, do it so it's not gonna cost the town money later to get rid of that, and, and, listen, I went through it on Gil Village Road. I couldn't widen it because people there said, "Don't widen it, don't cut trees." This will be different, we've got an easement, but just don't leave me that little crop of trees in, in the front just because it's a conservation scenic road thing, 'cause it looks foolish.
Well, we can't, only they can authorize the cutting of those trees.
They're sitting there, I'm just telling the planning board, "Hey, conservation, don't leave me that little strip of trees in the front."
Yeah, I mean, cons...
I don't wanna beat a dead horse. Tricia McCarthy again from Conservation. Completely agree, conservation did, it was not an official meeting, there was nothing published, it was just a sidewalk that we did on our own, however, everything is gonna be discussed at next Thursday's meeting, and one of the things possibly in your conditional, when Mike and Dennis get together, Conservation would like to see that the water runoff will go towards the driveways. That is one thing that we talked about when we walked around, and then we heard it again tonight, that would be great. Was there anything else, Nancy, we just said? And, and that we, we did, Todd said that he would flag trees because we wanted it to be more of a selective cut. We actually did walk in to, to the various lots to see, okay, where's roughly the test pits, where might septic and well be? So in some cases, it probably would be hard to try to do buffers in between the lots, but we definitely discussed our jurisdiction of the road in.
Right.
And we actually went in over 10 feet, and Unitil was even okay with that. But just so that you know, we will actively work and we won't end up with what was on Chase, I agree with Mike.
I, I believe that the developer on Chase made an effort.
Yes.
It's just that it was kinda shocking when you saw it.
It was. Again, that's all gonna grow, and we talked about the habitat corridor, both for vegetation and for animals, and there certainly is a method in our madness when we're, when we're talking about Curyeville Road, so we have that in our mind. Thank you.
I've got one other typographical change. On page one, in note four, you, you're talking about the, it's a dedicated senior scenic street, and you say the ordinance, section 31, it's supposed to be 26.
I'll make that change, that's no problem.
Yeah, I think, I think we might as well get it fixed.
That's good. Do we want to say anything? Do we want the plant to say anything about tree, you know?
Well, like you said, you can't be too vague, you have to be specific.
Well, that, that's why...
If you are vague, it's very hard to enforce, so if you say minimize the cutting of trees, who's gonna make that call?
Yeah.
I mean, to me, I think they should save some of the large canopy trees, either, you know, big ones in the back, not by the road, but anything that's in the back of the lot, or tall pines, you know, some animals, owls, bats, whatever, you know, they like those bigger trees, and to cut them all down, I think that's not good.
Okay, that's a...
You know, can you say keep a few that are, you know, however big on each lot? I don't know. Do we take a tour?
I thought you maybe raised your hand.
Oh, no.
Oh, okay. Mr. Zalinski, do you have him, what?
I don't know.
Mr. Hamel?
I've made my points.
Regarding the 10-foot?
I, I, that, I think, it, there's no good way to word it. I, I understand what you're trying to achieve, but, but I don't think there's any good way to word that, to, to end up with something which is aesthetically pleasing and enforceable.
Oh, yeah, you, you can't, you can't say anything is aesthetically pleasing because your aesthetics and my aesthetics could be two very different things.
Yes.
That's, that's why I suggested, as, as Rowden said, you know, establish a specific, I mean, a 10-foot wide patch along the boundary line is five feet on either side. That's not an awful lot of vegetation to be left behind, but it's enough so that homeowner on one side decides he wants to be able to mow right up to his boundary line, he can clear out whatever's left and mow it, but on the other hand, if he chooses not to, we don't get a lot of Norway maples, Japanese fireberry, the various things that have turned into insidiously invasive plants that are, that are growing in here, that we're possibly leaving some of the natural growth in existence.
I, I don't think there's a, I, I don't see a, a good way to, to proceed with that.
I have a question. When you're talking about this buffer, you're talking about in between each property, right?
Right.
I think it's a very confusing thing. I mean, I understand what you mean, but he could leave that. But when the property owner comes afterwards, he's got a right to cut those trees right down to his property line.
Exactly.
So, you know, I mean.
So what have we achieved?
Well, that's it. So I, I mean, it's a good concept.
For the person who says, no, I actually like having trees along my, so that I don't look at my neighbor's house.
Well, then they don't have to buy the lot, but anyway.
May I ask the developer something? Is the intent to clear cut these entire lots?
It's going to be select cut. My name's Todd Fitzgerald. It's going to be select cut. I'm going to hire Fred Leclerc to come in and select cut it. He's going to keep as many trees as he can for growth, but there's a lot of big pines that are dead out there. There's a lot of pines around where the houses are going. I don't know if you could put a definitive, definitive line with, between the houses, what would work? He's going to keep, he's a forester as well, licensed forester, so he knows what to cut, what not to cut.
You just said selective cut and your engineer said aggressive cut. To me, an aggressive cut is basically clear cut.
A selective cut, it will kill, go in and cut all the dead trees and, you know, trees that will promote growth within the property. It's going to look aggressive when he goes out there. It's going to look aggressive, probably not as aggressive as Chase, but when he gets out there and he goes and marks and he goes around cutting trees, he'll decide what can come down to promote growth for other trees and wildlife as well.
Okay.
I mean, they are going to have to cut where the house is going to go, where the septic system's going to go.
Well, that's all in the front, so, yeah.
We'll try to keep as many as we can. I like trees. I have trees all around my house.
I've had to plant mine. Is there anything else that we want for the next meeting?
I would just ask, as a developer, if you could consider doing a conditional approval, having the two engineers meet. I'm going to be paying for 68 inches of gravel, gravel slash crushed top, whatever we decide on, working with an easement with, on my property so the water can run off onto my property and the driveways. Just make it clear if we had some kind of a conditional approval, they can work together and we can just start the process a little quicker, that's all.
That's up to the board.
I think we've got pretty much everything ironed out that we want.
Wait for the redo.
There was a.
The motion, they were second to my motion.
Yes. Mr. White seconded your motion.
We're discussing whether or not we're going to continue.
Well, no, this was the discussion of all the stuff that needs to be added, whether or not they continue.
Yeah.
So your motion is still there. This was discussion about the motion.
Right.
So I have another question about that, because the lady brought it up. What is this blank area on lot 1.5? She thinks it's water. You say it's not water, but there are no elevations. What is it?
That is wetlands.
Is it? Well, let me get that, Danny.
Yeah, well, that's a plan to you.
Then we'll all know.
It's all, it's all poorly drained and some areas may be very poorly drained, but we didn't, we didn't go bother going in there because once it's wetlands, we knew that we couldn't develop it. We knew we had to stay away from it. So we only showed the edge of wetlands and that's, that's what it is. There's, there may be some very poorly drained out there, but a lot of it is just poorly drained soil. The contours and grades run from the culvert up slope all the way to Rose Corner. It goes beyond. The watershed even starts up at Woodya Street, as a matter of fact. So all the water from Woodya Street, that's the top edge of the watershed, comes all the way down and goes, goes through there. So.
So the reason it has no contour lines is it's basically, it's all one level and quite possibly it could be zero.
Well, it actually, if you look on page two.
Page two.
It says the edge of the water on April 23rd. So the day he was out there, there was water.
Exactly.
There isn't standing water year round.
Whether it's a vernal pool or a seasonal wetlands or permanent wetlands.
Yeah, right. So that's why there's nothing there.
It's all, it's all non-developable land.
So his calculation for this lot, there was enough in the front where he did all these little bars to get the calculation for that house in that lot.
Yes.
So.
Ms. Brack.
That wouldn't have been a negative to that lot, having that calculation.
Nope. It has to have sufficient soil size for your minimum lot size.
Okay, I'm recognizing this break. Could you please use the microphone?
I would kind of like to know if there is an intention to, to log that wet area because tree stumps are not going to do as much good for the environment as live trees that will distribute moisture up instead of just sitting there rotting.
I can't speak to the intention to cut some timber or not, but the timber could be cut in the wetland regardless of this subdivision occurring or not.
Right.
The property owner could simply do it with necessary wetlands permits.
Mm-hmm. It would be tricky from the soil descriptions, but it is feasible.
But the subdivision itself has no bearing as to whether or not it could have timber harvesting done on it.
Right. Any other discussion? The motion before us is to continue to the next meeting. All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
See you on October 9th.
Do not lose your paperwork. I had a big paper clip that was holding this. Oh, wow. I'd like to move along, please. Yep. Have all the conversations you want in the pocket.
It's raining.
Okay. I don't think any of them will melt.
Yeah.
Okay, item two, non-binding discussion, Gregory Cunningham, 85 South Main Street, compliance with site plan. You have in your board packet the letter that we received from Newton Properties LLC authorizing Gregory Cunningham of Ground Care LLC to speak on, as his agent. You also have the.
Yes, it looks like this. See this?
You also have a, received in your packet a copy of the plan that they submitted with some possible changes. This is the best way of describing it. They, there, this is a non-binding on either party discussion.
I know, I didn't get it.
And I think the first thing we'll do is ask, are you Mr. Cunningham?
I am, yes, I am.
Okay.
Hi. So we're leasing the property there from Newton, properties LLC. And there's an acre parcel there on the left, if you scale on the plan, there's an easement road that goes down back. On the left side of that is about an acre of land that we're all leasing and all we're asking is if we can put bins up so that we can kind of store material. So our company does landscape services and snow removal services. So we'd use concrete blocks to enclose all the sections and we'd put things like stone, mulch, sand, and salt, and they would all be contained in those areas.
Ms. Ralton?
About how big are each of the bins that you're talking about?
They can, they can vary. Well, you know, we didn't have anything in mind. Typically, we like to hold about 60 yards of material at most because we can work with that.
Okay.
And the salt in itself would be covered to make sure that nothing, no water got in there because it's not good for our product for that to happen, first and foremost. Maybe even a loom bin, although they might be the same bin. We might make sure we deplete all the salt and then put the loom in there as well, once it's cleaned out. But, yeah, they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be too deep. In fact, in going through this process, I wasn't asked for actual dimensions, so I apologize for not having those. But I am happy to, you know, provide something if needed. So it's typically, you know, three, three blocks out and the block is anywhere from six to eight feet-ish.
I had a couple of basic questions. First of all, how much of the site are you leasing?
That, that acre there.
This, this section on the side?
Yeah, to the left of the road and then some of that, some of the building.
Office space too?
Yes, some of the building, yeah.
So you're leasing all of it?
Well.
So, no, these are two parcels. There's the southern one, that's sort of the one acre empty area, and then there's the building itself.
Right, but I believe he's. The building has a significant amount of land behind it as well.
Yeah. I believe he's got the, the part of the building at the end, correct?
Correct.
And then this lot.
Right.
Yes.
Because there are certain things that the, the owner of the property has, is out of compliance on this plan. I mean, it's not a problem with the fact that they never built the building. However, when this plan was approved, there was a section that easement was supposed to be, to be dedicated to the public for street access.
It still is. That, that road.
I could find no documentation on that.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I know that when we, so when we moved in, we had to keep that whole roadway completely open for, for the easement, as far as the paperwork and if that goes.
Right.
I just, I just know it to be, from what I can understand from the paperwork, a thorough street that we had to always keep open. So we have no intention of going anywhere kind of near that or blocking it.
Okay. Like I said, I did, I did research, I looked it up and found no easement given to the town. I believe, that was just one question. Regretfully, the questions go to you because the property owner is not here.
Does, does the property owner own both the parcels and the, and the street in between?
Yes.
That's the way it appears.
Well, not the street in between. This is that, like that driveway that goes.
Yeah, but I thought that when we spoke of this parcel before, that, that the, the driveway going to the back, I thought was part of his property, that he owned it.
That's, I, I could find no documentation in our files for ownership of, of the easement.
I don't think it was an easement. I think he, it was ownership of that 50-foot wide driveway.
Okay.
Because that was part of the issue, whether it wasn't quite 50 feet.
In that case, these two parcels.
Roger, this is a different location than I think, than for the baseball fields.
No, this is the entrance for the baseball fields.
Yeah.
This is the entrance for the baseball fields.
Right, down the middle.
I'm sorry, I'm thinking of the wrong location.
And so when we spoke of the baseball field.
Yeah, it was 49.5.
He was talking about 50 feet on 108.
Right.
And it's not quite.
That was his. It was, it wasn't part of this parcel, it was part of the backland.
Yeah, it's part of the back parcel.
Well, that's, that's what I could not find clear and concise language or documentation on.
Well, when he, when he.
On the, on the, on the base plan that's in front of you, the original drawing from 2005.
Yeah.
That right-of-way easement, whatever you want to call it, was part of this.
It was?
Yes. And it was meant to be, to be dedicated to the public for street access, see note six on the.
Boundary plan.
On the boundary plan.
So this is not a boundary plan?
Right.
Okay. This is a site plan.
That was originally had something, was meant to be, to become town or a public access way.
At this point.
Right.
That clearly would need to be researched further.
That's.
As far as what they are proposing though, so I'm just going to put that access easement aside for right now. As far as what you are looking to do on this one parcel, the one acre parcel, I'm not worried about your office space in the building.
Well, we have another concern about that.
On the one acre parcel.
Yeah.
Which does not have a site plan currently.
Right.
It's just associated because of ownership with this other one. It does not currently have a site plan. Because it doesn't currently have a site plan, you would need one.
Right.
Be able to operate your business. Now, the, the question is, what level of site plan do you need?
So I spoke with the, and pardon me for not recalling the names right now, the woman here.
Gale, yep.
Gale, yeah. And then she referred me to another person who does, kind of helps you through the process. And we were, I brought this to both of them and they said, this should be sufficient enough to go into what we have to do. Just a messenger, I'm, I'm sorry for that.
So it was actually me you spoke with?
Oh, it was you? Okay.
It was. So what you?
Jennifer, okay. Make sure Ralton makes sense now.
Yep, that's me.
Sorry.
So what you're, and I think we spoke over the phone, so I.
We did, yes.
So what you have for this evening is exactly what you needed for this evening.
Okay.
To be able to do the use that you want to do, which a landscaping business is a perfectly acceptable use in this district, you would need a site plan. Now, there's two levels of site plan in Newton. One is a minor, which basically you end up needing a sketch with a little bit more detail than what you've offered, but it's not unsurmountable. Or a full site plan, which has things like drainage calculations and parking calculations and a lot more detail than the plans.
Okay.
So, I promise I'm getting someplace with this. So some of the requirements for minor site plan applications is that it actually can't exceed any bigger than 2,000 square feet of area disturbance.
Mm-hmm.
So that's really where, and it is possible to get that waived. That's sort of the threshold on this one because they're not, you're not proposing to build anything other than what it sounds like, the bins.
So the block bins, we're just looking to kind of put on top and, you know, they're all removable at the end of our tenure or whatever happens in the future. It's not something that's, we're not pouring concrete foundations or anything like that. They're just blocks that we're setting on top of currently what's there.
Okay.
And then putting, you know, for the most part, natural material in all of them.
I have one comment, and that was one of my other ones to make about that, is you listed salt here as being one of the.
As one of the products in the bin?
Exactly.
Yes. And the reason is because we do, we do snow removal as part of our services, so storage of having salt.
It would not be unreasonable to expect to see specific detail of how that salt is going to be contained.
Sure.
Yep.
And to prevent any possible seepage into the groundwater, because not only do you have houses fairly close, but you have a major, the town's largest aquifer recharge area there.
Yep.
And it would not be unrealistic to have board members who were very stringent that there be a specific plan on how that salt or any other soluble materials would be stored in such a way as to not disturb the, the water quality in the area.
Sure. Yeah, and we're happy to work with whatever's needed.
I phrase that nicely enough?
I will say that for what I suspect is the amount of salt you're dealing with, that's not an unsurmountable.
Right.
Obstacle. Basically, you just want it to be contained and have a roof over it and not be able to spill out of any, whatever container.
Or.
Or leach into the.
Exactly.
If, if I may, it's going to be on an annual basis temporarily stored there. So it typically comes in towards November and we've got it, you know, emptied by, you know, April. And, you know, we're constantly moving it out, obviously, as we're providing our services. Not that that changes too much, but at least, you know, it's not sitting there during, you know, the seven months of rain season or anything like that, so. the seven months of rain season or anything like that, so.
Well, even like how you transfer it into a truck, how much spillage and, I don't know.
Yep, and, and there are ways, there are ways of dealing with that, is, is my point. But to be able to get to the, what amount of approval do you even need? Um, two thousand square feet of, so your minor applications are for structural additions of less than ten percent of existing floor space or up to a maximum of two thousand square feet.
Right.
The other applicable is that projects where the amount of disturbed land totals two thousand square feet or less and disturbed land includes, but is not limited to, parking, driveway, septic and leach field and, except for emergency repairs, drainage pipes, ditching, building footprint. So if the area that you need to, I'm going to use disturbed as a loose term, or any place that you would need to do anything for parking, which I don't think would be a change on this site, but the actual bin structures, it depends on how big that footprint is.
If I, the way I have it proposed in the plan here is, is, uh, going along the whole back is, is almost excessive. Uh, just, I'd rather, I'd rather kind of say, all right, just in case we grow, can we, can we get it all right now? I can cut that down to whatever measurable, you know, we need approximately, um, you know, eight bins. They need to be, uh, machines width wide so we can go in there and take the material and put it into the truck. I just kind of took the, with no measurement, took the whole back of the property, divided it by whatever bins I could and said, okay, if we need to go that far.
How many feet is that?
You know, can.
Two thousand, it's not two thousand, you said two thousand square feet, right?
Two thousand square feet.
Right, and you can.
So it's the, just the footprint. It's not the yardage of material.
Can I ask a question though? Weren't you talking about disturbed? He's, if he's not disturbing anything, he's not digging anything in, he's just laying block on the top.
But if he's doing a structural addition.
Okay.
Right.
And, and these bins, even if they are easily removable, are still structures under here.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the, the blocks all interlock with each other.
Um, so my suggestion would be that you actually, and I'm happy to meet with you to kind of go over the details and you can work with Gail as well, is that they actually come in for a minor site plan application, of which you would have to have a more detailed sketch than this, but it doesn't have to be engineered plans, that depicts all of the requirements in the minor site plan, which is things like approximate lot lines, where, where the materials are going to be stored. You would draw the area where the actual, um, vehicles would be parked and stored. Doesn't have to be the exact, it has to be the general area, not the exact parking spot that everything would be in. Um, things like hours of operation.
I do have some of that. Um, if you, if you kind of follow the lines out, I'm not sure if everybody has the same one, so. As far as, as far as the trucks get parked, so in, in the area to the left, they're gone most of the day and they, and they come back in the evening, so we kind of just fill in the gap in the middle where we don't have like bins or anything and we can, uh, kind of structure that as, as best we can to, to make everybody happy. Um, and then, um, we have a little area for our winter equipment storage, some, some of that stuff we don't use during the summer, uh, and it's just vehicles. So we, we, we need just a place to park it essentially. Um, and then, um, we have an employee parking section. And, um, one, one thing I did propose on this because I, I wasn't sure, we, we wanted to make it clear that we want to be a positive addition to the area. Uh, that building, I've driven by it for a long time. It's just kind of been the building and everything's just been gravel, right, all around, so. Um, you know, we, we talked about, uh, even with the owner, putting up some planters and adding some flowers and stuff like that and trees on, on a yearly basis, just to kind of like liven things up. Because there are, there are residents in, in here, we want to make sure that there are positive impact in what we're doing. And I'm here with you guys today to make sure that we're doing things right and being a positive impact as far as, you know, the, the bins go. So our goal is to improve, uh, the site aesthetically, um, you know, but also do things correct.
One of the things that I know I would look at is, once we establish the ownership of that right-of-way or easement or what have you, um, that there is adequate access off-road because if somebody else owns that land, unless you have the right to pass and repass, you can't use that as your entrance or exit.
Sure, we, there are other openings that allow us to come right out from, from the building onto Route one oh eight, and then we have actually two entrance ways. Uh, definitely one.
Right.
That was my question.
Into that.
You have two entrances onto one oh eight. He can't use those, right?
Yes, he can.
He can?
If they're existing, yes.
It's just an open area though. It's not really like a driveway.
It's an island.
They are, they are curb cuts that allow you access onto the.
Right, in that little lot on the side?
Yeah, there, there are two there and there's one much further down.
The one thing it will require though is because they, because one oh eight is a state road, it would require getting an amended DOT driveway permit, which probably the use is not the problem. They're not going to make you do anything with the driveway. It's just, it's more of an official, DOT is blessing that what you are wanting to do on the site is allowed and they're not going to require any changes. But it is another process that you would need to go through.
What was approved for that piece?
No, it used to be an old dealership.
What?
It's just a paved lot.
Parking vehicles there at one time.
It, it, yeah, it appears to be a parking lot. I believe it has a chain link fence at one end. Um, and it's just sort of a sea of pavement.
Hmm.
Right.
Mismatched.
Right, so was there permits, like issued there to those spots?
Yeah, I just, you know, when we're talking about.
It almost doesn't matter what the use has been. It's whether, if you go through a site plan or minor site plan, you're effectively also doing a change of use. This type of use is allowed in that district, so.
Yeah, the, the, the use, the use sounds like it's permitted, however, there, there needs, we need to be able to look at it as sort of two different parcels because they are two, you know.
But he's not proposing doing anything with the parcel on the right.
He's just renting the pot of the building.
Just renting some office space over there.
So we're really only talking about this one acre parcel.
One acre parcel.
I understand your offices are nearby and convenient, but that, that effectively doesn't matter.
Well, there, there is only because the police chief sent a letter regarding the office space.
Fire chief.
The fire chief.
But, but that's an issue for that site, not this site.
That's, that's why we're, it's regretful they're both on the same piece of paper because that's the way.
Normally that would have not been.
If, if you fold the piece of paper, we can.
That's good.
I hate to say this, but if you, if you fold the paper, it still all ends up on one.
Let's origami this thing together and see if we can just get the, uh.
Um, but regarding site plan, so you coming here tonight is not the planning board giving you approval.
Can we pretend it is?
So the process to do a site plan.
Yeah.
Which is what I think that they need. And I think a minor site plan is, is probably sufficient. Um, you know, we can talk about the size aspect if, if and when they come in. You would need to apply for a site plan, which is filling out an application. They are due about twenty-five days before the next planning board meeting, so.
I would do that with Gail, I assume.
You would do that with Gail. Um, and while Gail's out, Jim is filling in for her. So it would be about twenty-five days before the next planning board meeting, which is the second and fourth Tuesday of every month.
Okay.
So you would file an application, generally minor site plans, and there's a whole form that you have to fill out, but in its details, what information is needed. But it's basically a sketch with the information you've provided. Comes before the planning board. It will cost you the application fee and the abutter notices, which are about twelve dollars per abutter, so that's anybody that has a property touching any of these properties and across the street.
Okay.
You would come before the planning board. They would see what you presented, offer opinions, kind of what you saw earlier tonight. Um, the public would be allowed to, um, present any comments they had. The planning board considers that if you have all of your ducks in a row, something of this nature can reasonably get through in one meeting, but it, the planning board technically has sixty-five days to make a decision once they, you've provided all of the required information. So it could take one meeting. It could potentially take three meetings, which is, so you're working six weeks potentially.
Okay.
Um, so I'm, I'm not saying that because it takes that long usually, but just so you know what timeframes you're getting into.
Yeah, I mean, it's important because if, if we can't have a, um, a salt bin up before the season comes, then we'll be in trouble. We'll have to find that somewhere else, uh, for the time being, so.
So if you're wanting to get this in before sort of snow season's going to hit us, you need to get your application together very quickly so you can get it in for the next meeting deadline, which is still going to be very tight.
I'm just filling in for Gail while she's on vacation. When you leave, if you go up and look on the planning board door, you will, there is a sheet that shows when the meetings are and the.
I, I have a picture of both of them on my phone.
Oh, okay.
It's also online.
Then you can, then you can look at that. That will tell you.
When we're open.
When you have to have it, the application in, in order to be on what, at what meeting.
I mean, I, I'll be here, I think Thursday's when the office is open next, right?
Correct.
So I'll, I'll be down here to fill out whatever I have to and then, who, so who do I work with?
Uh, the application is actually available online at the Newton.
Well, if you can get in by Thursday.
It's on, it's on the website, go, if you go to the planning board application.
Yeah, so that would be.
Um, and you can also call me. I can walk you through sort of, and I can give you my card before you, you leave.
And you might be able to meet with me there? Is that what you said earlier? No, did I just?
I can work with you over the phone, or if you're willing to come up to Exeter, I can work with you on information needed as well.
Office is open on Thursday, Rachel.
Excuse me?
Yes.
The office is open on Thursday.
The office is open on Thursday from noon to eight, with a minor break someplace in the early evening. Um, however, there's a difference, this is one of the differences between Gail helping as a voting member of the planning board. I cannot assist you in preparing your application.
Other than you can say you need to write your name on it.
I can answer broad questions.
So I'm, I'm happy to help you if you've got questions as you're filling it out. I do get the application. I review it and I provide feedback ahead of the meeting, so you know if you're missing information, that you know to submit it. And hopefully it's only anything minor at that point.
Okay, so it's, it's really just a new plan?
Yes. This is a very good start, but a little bit more detail and ideally with some measurements and knowing how big the bins are or how big the area you want to park.
Are there ideals that I, I could know and write down? I mean, should I stay below two thousand square feet of bin, bin areas or, you know?
I think that that will take one of the questions off as to whether or not you are a minor site plan or a major site plan. Um, if you need to go over the two thousand square feet, you will need to actually ask for a waiver from that requirement. So if you need to be twenty-one hundred, so it's just a little bit over and, but you really need that, that might be a reasonable waiver.
However, you come in with thirty-five hundred.
So is the, is the two thousand square feet the, uh, the outside footprint of the block or is the inside bin space?
Outside.
The outside. It's the, it's the footprint. Just think of it as the footprint.
Okay.
Coupled with anything else that you do there.
Such as parking or anything or?
Parking is not structures, but if you need to change the parking, that's disturbing the area. Um, I will say something like nice planters, not structures.
Right, but if, if you decide to put up permanent fencing, that is a structure.
Fencing is actually not a structure.
Don't tell the building department that.
Currently, um, before, before the property was purchased, from my understanding, as I've seen it like that for a while, there's just been the Jersey barriers that kind of block off a lot of the sections there, um, so that nobody can kind of steal things, I guess. Um, so that's what's been there, from what I understand, for, for quite some time. Uh, we could just continue with that, just not to disturb what's going to be.
But I mean, if you wanted, what Jim's gonna, if you wanted to put a shed up to store material or anything of that, that does start to be a structure and that would count.
A, a little guard shack, a place where people, you know, stop to pay. I don't know whether or not th- this is a retail space where people would pull in in truck and like, in Kingston, there's a, there's a place, they have two versions of this. One is only sold by bucket fulls where they dump it into the bed of your pickup truck. And on the other side, you pay, I think it's ten or twenty-five cents per shovel full. You shovel it into your own buckets and, and take it away that way.
Sure. So, uh, to, to answer your, your question about the retail, first and foremost, uh, the bins are for, for us and, and essentially our efficiency and, uh, in, in the work that we do. I, I was gonna, you know, depending on how this all went and what makes sense, and, and looking for feedback here on this, we're happy to kind of open up to a, a smaller retail spot where, you know, residents in the area can come get a little bit of mulch or, or whatever it is, if it's a positive thing, you know, for the community. If it's too much and maybe the community doesn't want it, we don't necessarily need it, but we're, we're happy to, to take on that opportunity if it's available. I just don't know how much more that would take, a, and we better, are we better off just kind of looking for our own bins at this point?
Well, that, that was, that would be my other question is, is this, these bins large enough for you to store the materials that you use as a commercial landscaper?
Yes. Yeah, so there would be, um, each bin would roughly be, um, and maybe one or two of them might be a little bit bigger if we look through that material a little bit of, more often. But one track, one, one kind of trailer load which would hold, um, uh, materials so we could kind of cycle it through. If it's not retail, I want that material out of that bin as fast as possible, so we're not going to overload that. That doesn't help us. All of our vendors that we get our stuff from, uh, except for salt, which comes out of Portsmouth or Boston, depending on, on which ports bring it to us, all of our vendors are, are local. So I can get it quick. If I'm low, I can get it the next day and they'll be, can get it out of there. The more, more material sitting in the bins, the more, more money, companies' money is just sitting there. We, we want to avoid that. But the, the efficiency that we have by, if you go to a, uh, if you go to a nursery and you go in and you talk to the people that you want to buy a yard of mulch and then they, they tell you, okay, pay for it here, here's your slip, go see the guy in the loader, you go see the guy in the loader, you give him your slip. He goes, gets the mulch, brings it over to you, you dump it into a truck and then you're off on your way.
Right.
Companies paying people to go through that whole process on multiple times a day. So our thing is, when the guys, guys are ready to go in the morning, they, or, or at the end of the day, they can load their trucks up right there, cut all that out and then get on their day. Um, that's, that's how we've built it. And we've done this in North Andover, but now we're kind of moving it.
The reason I wondered on that concept is that it's going to be one of my wobbitied he. Wobbitied he who comes in and says, we only want four bays, because that's all we need. And then six months later comes in and says, we want another four bays, all to keep it under two thousand square feet, and then another, another four bays.
No, I don't, I don't, with all due respect to all of you, I don't even want to be here tonight, so I don't want to do this again.
It's, it's just one of the, from what you're sounding is each bay is going to be fairly good size, probably ten by twenty feet deep to fit a tractor trailer load?
How many yards does it go? How tall? Three blocks tall?
Well, there, there's something known as the physics of maximum incline.
So with, with, with that said, let's call it maybe anywhere from ten to fifteen, um, wide, and then let's call it twenty feet deep. I mean, I, I could realistically keep this under that two thousand square foot, footprint, and I can put that anywhere on the property that it'll, A, fit, and B, you would prefer it to be.
Each one of the, the three hundred square feet apiece, so if you're going to have.
Seven bays.
Yeah.
Goes over, goes over.
It was ten times twenty, isn't that?
I thought, well, I was going fifteen, or fifteen.
Yeah, it, it was fifteen. I, I was just saying, I can keep it down by reducing the bins or, or whatever, or keeping it to that ten. Uh, if it doesn't, obviously we're going over that mark and that puts me at twenty-four hundred square feet. I understand that. Um, but I, I'm just, I'm willing to work with you guys on whatever makes things easiest.
Well, I, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, be realistic, don't.
Yeah, don't just try to get under now and then.
Exactly, and then go, you know, in, in, in a little while, we'll go back and ask for more and then, that, that's not a very popular way of doing things.
I, I understand that, yeah. I mean, if, if, if we have a significant growth and.
Yeah.
Ever, the town's happy with what we've been doing there, maybe years down the road, great. But every time we add bins, it also costs us quite a bit of money too, so.
All of the regulations for the minor site plan are listed on the website.
Yep. Um, my one other comment is that if you want to do sort of the retail aspect, that does add to where the customer's going to park, how's the traffic flow going to operate? So it will add a complicating factor to it, so. It, it doesn't mean it's not allowed, doesn't mean it's not feasible, but just that will add one more thing.
That, that might be the only thing we would try to add down, down the future. Maybe not add bins, but say, okay, this has been going fairly well. We've had a ton of people stopping in saying, do you sell that product? It makes financial sense for us to, to maybe propose that in the future.
Now, is this area and that, the end of that building, the only part of the land that you are using?
Correct.
Okay, so you're not the people who have, um, had piled stuff out behind the buildings at one time?
Correct. Correct.
So that sort of covers that. There was, I do have a letter from the fire chief that I'm going to present to you, and... Quite honestly, it's gonna need to be answered.
Probably can't be answered by me, but I can present it to the...
Well, it has to do with the fire load in the building that has a copy of it.
I will say, though, that this issue is an issue with the other property and that property owner.
But this is the same gentleman renting this space at the end that these problems are talking about.
I understand, but they're just, they are separate issues, even though it's the same person.
I know, however, it came up as part of this when I spoke to the fire chief and showed him the plan, and said, "Do you see anything here that you have a problem with?" And he said, "We have a problem with the fire load in there." It's all under the same umbrella, though it's not on the same parcel.
Right. Should he be addressing this with, directly with the fire department then?
I was just gonna say, I would honestly suggest addressing that directly with the fire department.
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll share this with the owner of the property and...
They brought it to our attention as a selectman. I'm the ultimate in superior respondency. So once I know the content of the letter, it has to be passed along.
Sure, understood.
Anything further? Anything, any further questions for us?
No. Yeah, so again, it's just understanding the process, and I'll work with Jennifer on that, I think, and I'll fill out the application as best I can online.
The application fees and the NEPR deposit are also listed there.
I can pay those online with a credit card, I assume, or no?
No.
So half online and half in person?
Yes.
Thanks so much.
And Gail will be back in Monday. She has a lot more flexibility as to the types of questions she can answer.
Okay.
As an elected official and a voting member of the planning board, I cannot actually assist in the drafting of the application. Whereas Gail, because she is not a voting member, has the ability to... She doesn't have to be quite as impartial as I try to be.
Okay.
So is there anything further?
Nope.
There is none. I'll say thank you and good luck.
Yeah, thank you guys for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay, moving along with the agenda. I was just gonna say, Ms. Rowden, would you be really loathing us if I suggested that we put off having any discussion on groundwater management tonight?
As long as everybody reads it so it's fresh in their mind for the next meeting, I would be fine with that.
And keep your paperwork. Excuse me?
October 9th.
Okay, and we can move right along to board business and correspondence. Can I have a motion on the minutes from 8:28:18?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you.
I've got several comments.
Okay. Hang on a second.
Page two.
Page two, just a second.
Okay.
Right before it says, "J. Doggett made a motion."
Yeah.
Yes.
You should insert in there basically a paragraph that says that there was a discussion, that there was a small amount of impervious material and the water flow is towards the grass in the wetland. It explains why we approve the waiver.
Did you write, did you write that on your thing?
I don't have, I've got big notes that I understand, but not...
Okay, say it again.
Okay, sorry, it had something that says, "There was a discussion of the small amount of impervious material."
Okay.
And that the water flow is from the road, over the grass, towards the wetlands.
Okay.
Page three. Actually, first it starts with a question. Second paragraph. The last sentence, did you say that, Jim? Because if you did, it's not true.
No, I didn't say prohibited from being paved.
You did. Class five, but it's not because of the class five road. All of town roads are class five roads.
No, they're not.
No.
Nope.
Town roads.
No, some are class four. Some are class three.
Class four, in Newton?
Yeah.
Yeah.
108 is class three.
That's a state road.
Yeah.
Class two.
Oh, okay.
Because one and two are the state roads.
Yeah, well, no, one is highways, two is state roads. Three, four, five are town roads.
And six are ones you don't maintain.
Six are town roads that are unmaintained.
Right.
But anyway, something should be changed in that sentence.
I honestly did not catch that.
So how do you want, how do you need it changed? Do we just get rid of it?
The way I phrased it is, because of the class of the road, it would probably, like I said tonight, it would never be paved. I did not say that it was prohibited from...
You mean, would probably never be paved?
Yeah, I think it would...
And I think you want to strike the class five piece.
That is a class five road.
It is, but that's not why, that isn't the reason why it's not going to be paved. Anyway, something...
I may have very well said, the class of road it is, means that, because it doesn't, it's not built.
In the next paragraph, the third line up from the bottom of the paragraph, it says, "Dirt roads are maintenance." I think what that means is, dirt roads require a lot of maintenance.
Yeah, but that's what he said, that's how he said it. He said, "Dirt roads are maintenance."
Oh, okay. Dirt roads are...
Maintenance.
Yeah.
But it should be a quote, then, maybe, because he's gonna say it. Makes sense.
Yeah, that doesn't make any sense.
Actually, it flips at the end, three dots, that means that there was more that should have been said, but wasn't.
Imply, what was implied.
For what it's worth, meetings don't have to be verbatim.
But it didn't. Page five, 4A. This is fixing the minutes from before that. It should say, on the third line down, "I Hamel recused himself..." It shouldn't say after...
After number two, yeah.
No, but, no, it's actually between the title and the discussion of the item.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
But that isn't the way it reads. That isn't the way the correction...
All right, then maybe it just needs to say between.
Yeah.
Between number two and the discussion.
Okay, yeah.
And the top of line of page six, is it, that's the grammatical one? I was on a roll by that point.
Oh, okay.
Upon the receipt in hand, it should say, "Of the project."
Yep.
Of the project?
Yeah.
Okay.
With those changes, do I have a motion?
Well, we already did.
No, no, no.
We already had a motion and a, and, okay.
Does the person who made the motion accept those changes as a friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. The second also?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. I'm gonna straighten up this paperwork on Thursday. There are two manifests tonight.
Let me hand them to you. Oh, you got them.
Yeah, I got them. The first manifest is from the NEPR account of father and son realty for a legal ad in the amount of $27. Can I have a motion to pay?
Motion to pay.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
The chair will be signing them. I think she kind of knows. That's unanimous. There is a operating budget expense manifest in the amount of $61.94 for phone service.
Motion to pay.
Thank you. Second?
Second. Whoever.
You can choose whoever you want. And shoot. I just realized the wrong dates are in the... All those in favor?
Aye.
No, no, no. This actual physical sheet, I screwed up one, I did not change one of the dates. Okay, so that's unanimous. Bond reductions, you have this in your...
Yes, from KB Partners?
Right.
We don't have one for Sarah. There wasn't anything from Sarah's Way in the package. I didn't see.
No, I didn't see that either. It's on the list, but I didn't see it.
It was on the list I found. Hold on a second, let's... I had a letter, and I just realized that Mike never got back to us on that. From the people at Sarah's Way requesting the release of their road bond. I sent this, I put this on the agenda and sent a message to Mike Fignalli, and just realized that he didn't, he didn't respond on it.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion to send him another note?
No, no, that, I'll simply do that on Thursday. The other one, I believe...
It's puzzling.
Right.
So this is for the road?
This is for the puzzling maintenance bond.
The maintenance on what? On the road?
Yes.
Yeah, that was to...
He checked the roadway.
Right.
So this is, the road, the road was accepted, it's two years old, it is still standing there.
Yes, and you are not in a butter, or nor do you have a conflict of interest on this one. And that's why you were asking.
Yeah, well, that's the first thing, I wanted to make sure exactly what this, what this one is for, because...
Right, this is the $68,954.55 for the maintenance bond.
So that, and that's the, that's the end of it? That's, we'll be done with the road?
No, if he does anything further on the building out back...
He'll have to give a new one.
Right.
For now, this is done. Okay. Make a motion that we recommend to the board of selectmen that they release the bond on puzzling.
Okay. That's to release the LOC document?
Yeah.
Letter of credit. Is there a second?
A second.
You had three seconds that time. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. And I would liken the records to show, as much as, there may have been some corrections to the minute, I applaud Gail for having been able to decipher...
Yeah, that was a long one. That's right.
And a blessing upon you for having to get tonight done.
I have a question. Do we, have we received the 105?
I do not have, have not, do not have it in my hand.
Okay.
Item final, and that is, at your place, you had a voluntary lot merger procedure?
Yeah, could I, could I talk about that?
Of course.
Okay. We talked about this at a meeting at one time, and we decided on a procedure. And in thinking about it again, I kind of reworked it because assessing really does need to see it first, and do lot numbers and everything, so... They, so if you take a look at this, I think that this is the way that it would work the smoothest. Because we were worried about the last time, we didn't get the chance to okay it first. She can do, well, just read it, and then if you haven't...
The other issue, the other issue we had last time was that it got approved, and there was, there was no money to register it, and there was no money for driving to go get it.
Okay, this, this takes, read the whole thing. This takes this into consideration.
Right. The only thing I saw missing, I read it before the meeting. The only thing it says is that you're gonna mail it to the registry.
Yes.
They have to provide postage.
We can provide a stamp. We can provide a stamp.
Is it just a single stamp?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It's just a, one piece of paper, two pieces of paper like this. It goes in an envelope.
Yeah. That was my only comment about it.
So anyway, it would be appropriate to have a motion to adopt the voluntary lot...
Shouldn't this be part of our procedures?
That's what I'm getting to.
If you want to adopt it as your procedure, you need a motion to move it for consideration at the, for public hearing at the next planning board meeting.
And then we would have to figure out where to put it in the procedures.
Appendix A.
No, I don't understand why this is actually that kind of procedure. This is just a between the two departments.
Yeah, this is really not a planning board procedure. It's not electing officers. It's not...
This is just how we want to report with assessing for this particular thing, and it doesn't come up all that often.
Yeah, but the thing is, if we don't put it in the procedures book, you'd get lost.
No, she, she will have this.
This is almost more of a planning board administrative assistant operations.
Okay.
Yeah, I would call it something else then, rather than a procedure. What would you like me to name it?
I don't know. Call it a guideline.
Guideline. I like that.
I think we should put the RSA on the top somewhere, so at least when you're reading it, if you have a question, you can go to the RSA and say what it really says, to like, kind of...
I would call it the Town of Newton voluntary lot merger guidelines.
Guidelines? For RSA, or reference RSA, whatever that RSA number is.
672.
What is it? I have it in this mess somewhere.
I don't know what that RSA is.
672? I don't know if I took it in there.
Okay.
Sure I can find it.
Yeah.
And we also have to get the assessor to agree to it. We don't have any authority over the assessor.
No, but she wanted something in writing.
Yeah.
So that she would know how to do, because between what we talked about the first time and then what the planning board talked about the last time, it was two different things. So is everybody, is the consensus of the board that this is good then, going forward?
Yeah, the only, like I said, the only thing I would consider was the postage. But if you, if you want to eat the postage, then that's fine.
You guys don't get too many voluntary lot mergers?
No.
No.
That's why we had the problem, is because we don't get too many of them.
We don't get too many.
Okay.
Still, can we have a motion to adopt?
We're gonna adopt the guideline?
Yeah.
With those amendments, we're gonna add a few things to it?
Yeah, we're gonna change the title and add the RSA.
Yep.
Sure.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Are you making that motion?
Sure.
Huh? Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, I have nothing further on my list.
Nope. Nothing. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second it. You can even take back your chair, and you can have this called the vote.
No, go ahead.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. We are adjourned.
Thank you.